Welcome to May 28, 2024, Millbrae City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:07 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Pappin.
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Fong.
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
Thank you. For those who are able, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everybody. Mr. Vice, would you like to lead us to the land acknowledgement?
The Millbrae City Council acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral, traditional, and contemporary homeland of the Ramatou Shaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We wish to pay our respects to the ancestors and relatives of the Ramatou community and to affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. We recognize that the Ramatou Shaloni have lived in harmony with nature for millennia, and to achieve a truly ecological, sustainable future for Millbrae, we must embrace indigenous, traditional ecological knowledge and how we care for the city's lands, waters, and all its people. We will continue to uplift and foster a meaningful relationship with the Ramatou Shaloni community, and we encourage all to visit www.ramatou.org to learn more about the Ramatou Shaloni people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And for tonight's agenda and also future agenda, if you are interested in speaking under the public communication for items not on the agenda, we ask that you either raise your hand on Zoom or submit your speaker slip to the city clerk by 7:15 PM so that we can schedule your speaking at the public speaking time slot. For all other items, you can raise your hand or submit a speaker slip when the item is heard on the agenda. So the first item tonight is a ceremonial presentation, the proclamation proclaiming the month of June as a pride month, and we have Councilmember Pappin. We'd like to say a few words for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City of Millbrae proclamation, whereas the City of Millbrae is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and/or questioning, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ people in our diverse community, and whereas June has historically become a symbolic month in America after the Stonewall riots in Manhattan, New York back on June 28, 1969, where Marsha P. Johnson stood in solidarity to demand equality and respect for the LGBTQIA+ individuals, and LGBTQIA+ individuals have had an immense, immeasurable impact on the culture, civic, and economic success of our community and strengthen it by contributing to the character, talent, economy, and leadership in our city. And whereas we celebrate all the past LGBTQIA+ icons have paved the way to all current and future generations to continually and forever represent their most authentic and true self every day, and whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has worked tirelessly for respect and equality, and although advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of the LGBTQIA+ persons, we still face discrimination simply for being who they are, thus making it important for all communities to stand up and show support for all who are affected. And whereas each of us can and should promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, support all community members, prevent the spread of misinformation, and reject hate and bias in all forms, which will make the City of Millbrae a stronger and healthier community. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for our LGBTQIA+ community and is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas we encourage residents to recognize and acknowledge the contributions of the LGBTQIA+ members of our community as we continue to advance the principles of liberty, equality, and inclusivity for all. Now, therefore, we the members of the Millbrae City Council do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month, and we invite the community to join us as we raise the rainbow flag on June 7, 2024 at 12:30 PM in Civic Plaza to encourage all LGBTQIA+ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhood make the City of Millbrae a vibrant community to live, work, and visit. That is our proclamation, and I also note that the City of San Mateo is going to have, I think, their second Pride Parade on June 1, which is a lot of fun if you haven't checked it out yet, and I think Redwood City is doing some as well. So do we have someone accepting this?
Yes, and we're excited. Today, we have San Mateo County LGBTQIA+ Commissioner Marilyn Hollinger. Would you please join us at the podium, say a few words?
Of course. So I want to thank the City Council, Mayor and the City Council for this proclamation. It's lovely. I know there's a lot of letters.
I was getting a rhythm.
Right, right. It was great. You did a great job. It's hard to mouthful. On behalf of the LGBTQIA+ Commission of San Mateo County, I'd like to accept this proclamation and say a few words about why it's important. Now, you know, it sounds like a lot of really round, big words, but you know, I lived in Millbrae for 15 years and sadly don't right now, but I did, and I raised my children here. And what was really important, what's really important about this is that on public record now, this council who represents, you know, is the leadership of the city, says this is important, and we stand by you. And that's really important when you're talking about raising your kids or being just in the community. And as a lesbian who lived in this community for 15 years, it made a difference, makes a difference to hear those words. And so don't ever think it's just rote. Even if you use the same proclamation every year, every year you're reaffirming your support, and that is super important. And I'm, I want to thank you. It's very heartfelt and very important to us. So, and I do hope you'll see, we have the county, we're going to have the parade, I think it's the 8th, actually.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Hopefully, check your calendars.
That's okay, and there's, there's a whole festival. So if you can make it on the 8th, the parade's at 10, and the festival's from 11 to 7, 6?
33?
No, it's later than that. It goes later than that. Yeah, so it's a whole thing at Central Park in San Mateo. So please join us for that. It's going to be great fun. There's going to be games and booths and music and dancing and all sorts of things. So it'll be very fun. Anyway, again, on behalf of the commission, we thank you, and Millbrae's a great place, so thank you for keeping it that way.
And if you could join us over here, we'll do a picture with the council.
That's right.
Thank you.
And we really enjoy having you here because we're at a very diverse city and all the people here. We really look forward to having every, everyone has an opportunity to be who they are and celebrate their own, in their own way, in their own culture, and be included in the city. So thank you for joining us today. Okay, so next up is a general overview and staff briefing. City Manager, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. As you know, from the last City Council meeting, we had National Public Works Month, and last year we celebrated with National Public Works Week. And I can't say enough good things, obviously, about the men and women who work in our Public Works Department. Our Public Works Department is, is critical to our city, and they do an outstanding job maintaining all of our infrastructure and keeping our city looking pristine and protect life and property throughout the year. Also, I'd like to just recognize Chief Allen and the Millbrae Police Bureau that hosted an appreciation luncheon for our Public Works crews. So we're so grateful for the collaboration with the Sheriff's Office and the team effort throughout the year, working with Millbrae Police Bureau and our Public Works Department and all of the staff here at the City of Millbrae. So we would really like to thank Chief Allen and the great partnership and, and team approach that they have committed to the City of Millbrae. Next, commission and committee, we continue with our recruitment. We invite people to participate in shaping the community through service on one of our eight commissions and advisory committees. We continue to accept applications for all eight commissions and committees. To apply, you can visit the city website specifically at bit.ly/millbrae.com. So bit.ly/millbrae.com. And we still have, even though there's some appointments scheduled tonight, a Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, Park and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Senior Advisory Committee, Sister Cities Commission, and Youth Advisory Committee. So anybody that's interested in serving the city, please take a look at our website. Upcoming events, we start to get very busy here the, the month of June, starting this Saturday, June 1. We have another informational community meeting on the fire assessment. The, you can join us again June 1 in the David J. Chakuti Room, starting at 10:00 AM. So anybody out there in the public that is desirous of getting information or receiving information about the property-based fire assessment, please join us again Saturday, June 1 at 10:00 AM in the David J. Chakuti Room. Ballots are due June 11. Also, Monday, June 3, from noon to 7:00 PM, the Millbrae Rotary Club is hosting the Fifth Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. Proceeds benefit the Millbrae Recreation Youth Scholarship Fund and the Millbrae Rotary Youth Services Project. To register, you can visit the website at bit.ly/millgolf. Again, bit.ly/millgolf, or you can call 650-259-2364 for more information. Also, then Thursday, June 6, this is very exciting. We had talked about it. The City of Millbrae, in conjunction with Mills High School, at Central Park, is hosting a block party. So you can join the graduating class of 2024 for the block party with a special concert featuring our very own Jeremy and Justin Garcia from The Voice. Food trucks will be at the park, starting at 5:00 PM, so food will be available for purchase. The concert will start at 5:30 PM. The City of Millbrae, we will be handing out free ice cream for the first 400 people, so you might want to get there a little early because it's probably going to be a great warm afternoon. So we're really excited about this, and the collaboration with the high school district and the principal has, have been just, just terrific. So this may be the beginning of a, of a tradition that the City of Millbrae and the Mills graduating class get together for the end of the year. As was mentioned, Friday, June 7, starting at 12:30 PM, is the Pride Progress Flag Raising. This is in collaboration with the San Mateo County LGBTQIA+ Commission. So we will be hosting that flag raising ceremony, starting again at 12:30 at Civic Center Plaza. This is the plaza between the David J. Chakuti Room and the, and the Millbrae City Library. And then Friday, June 14, at sundown, right around 8:30 PM, Millbrae goes to the movies featuring Trolls Band Together. This is our outdoor event that's starting at Central Park. So June 14, it's, it's always a fabulous evening. Bring blankets if it's a little bit cold and windy, and enjoy the outdoor movies. So again, that starts right at dark, but we also have games and festivities and popcorn and food trucks before the movie starts. And then Saturday, June 15, at 10:00 AM, is Millbrae, the kickoff of Millbrae's Juneteenth Celebration, our second annual. So we're looking forward to hosting our second annual Juneteenth Festival and Celebration. This 2024 celebration will begin with a celebratory flag raising at Civic Center Plaza, again, the area between the David J. Chakuti Room and the library at 10:00 AM. That will be followed by a parade that will basically start at the parking lot here at City Hall and proceed to Broadway, down Broadway, back up Hillcrest, Magnolia, and end up at, at Central Park. And then the festivities begin in earnest at 11 o'clock. So there'll be food, carnival games, entertainment, interactive, instructional activities, and vendors across the Bay Area to help celebrate this very important holiday. I would also like to take this opportunity with the collaboration of Black Wall Street and their staff in the San Mateo Community College District and their staff in this partnership. I think we're going to have a terrific event and could see well over 1,000 people during the day. So Mayor, a lot happening, and that kind of concludes a, a quick overview of what's happening this month.
Thank you so much. It's a lot to be updated, and we're getting, we're getting into the summer, and we're getting heated up and exciting activities throughout the entire community. Thank you for the update. Next up is the approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes on March 12, 2024, and the regular meeting minutes of March 26, 2024. Any comments or discussion? Take a motion.
So move.
Second. Vice Mayor, and we also have Councilmember Schneider. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
The 270 minutes are passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. And tonight, we don't have any oral report from City Committee or Commission Chair, so that moves on to public communication. This portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. Speakers must address subject matters within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Every speaker will have three minutes tonight, because I have, I believe I have one hand raised online, and we got four speakers, so we got total five. And, and the speaker is reminded to address directly to the entire council, not individual council members nor the public. We will first begin with in-person speakers and then followed by speakers online. First up, we have Mr. Ken Smith, followed by Maha afterwards.
Good evening, councilmembers. I would like to address our upcoming parking, paid for parking. And there's a couple of things I just want the council to kind of think about when we're planning our parking and working with our consultants on the parking. First, what is the problem we're trying to solve? There's a lot of little issues that go along with solving the problem. Deterring people from coming downtown for, like, the post office and the UPS for packages delivery, because they're going to be running in and out real quick. I wrote a story about the onion. I think I sent it to all the council members about the woman that went, who lives in San Bruno and went to the produce market in San Mateo, I mean, on San Mateo Avenue in San Bruno, and all she wanted was an onion, but that onion ended up costing her $1.50 when it was a 25 cent onion, because she had to pay for parking, run into the market, pay for the parking, come back out again. So that's something that we need to really consider about our time slots. But on the other hand, and what, and what I was saying is that, you know, could it be at a 15-minute increments versus an hour increment? Because some people just want to run in and run out. But would that support the operational cost of the program if it was 15 minutes versus an hour? Because you could get someone that's just going to be there for five or 10 minutes, pay their, pay for their hour, and then that person leaves, and another couple of persons comes right behind them and pays for their hour, right? And so it's almost double dipping, but it's the way it generate revenue. I get it. But that is, that is one of the concerns I think that we need to address and figure out before we go. Those are lessons learned, I think, from San Bruno. I guess the other thing is that, have we discussed with the Chamber of the Converse, their, their, do they agree or disagree with it? their their do they agree or disagree with it? I know I've talked to a few business owners, some want it, some don't. The ones that really want it is because they don't want business employees parking Broadway and the main streets. And I guess the food delivery, I know that there's been a little bit of discussion, but has it really been thought out really carefully about how we're going to deal with the guys and gals that are coming in for food delivery, takeout? And then my personal concern, and I'm I'm not, is I live 200 block Taylor, and I already saw some things on Nextdoor in in San Bruno that people are blocking driveways and considerate parkers because they didn't want to pay for parking. And is the surveillance going to be strong enough to make sure that we are our our driveways are not being partially blocked? That's all I have. I just really want, I know we have a parking.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, we have Maha, followed by Admusa.
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor. My name is Maha. I'm a longtime resident of District One, and here I am again to remind you that we are not going away. And while you take your time grappling with how to avoid a ceasefire resolution, our people are being bombed, burned alive, beheaded in Rafa in the last couple of days, the so-called safe zone with 2,000 pound bombs, courtesy of the USA. Are you seeing the horrors? The mom carrying her six children's ashes in her hands? Are you hearing the screams and cries? Are you outraged? Or do you not care? What will compel you to act and act swiftly? When will you have the moral clarity to move forward and pass a ceasefire resolution? Every day that our council stays silent, the death toll in Gaza multiplies. It's been almost eight months witnessing massacre after massacre. It's unacceptable, and our community is in pain, waiting for you to do the right thing and adopt a ceasefire resolution. It's long overdue. Once again, we ask you to pass a humanitarian resolution calling for an immediate permanent ceasefire, unrestricted humanitarian aid to reach suffering communities, and release of hostages from all sides. Do something, please. We're waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, Maha. Mr. Admusa, followed by John Mafara.
Mayor, vice mayor, city council. I also speak about a resolution for ceasefire in Gaza. And I've been here for six, seven months now, constantly asking about it. It's definitely needed, especially after what's happened these past few days. I mean, it's, you know, you've got 35,000 people that died, you've got millions that have had to move from north to south constantly, and they hit the peak of south, then they had to move them out of Rafa towards the west, towards the coast. Safe zone, yet they drop bombs on them in a safe zone. We need to do something about it. We need to say something about it. We are a diverse city. There's a lot of people that feel strong about this. And there is some people that don't want it at all. Why, I don't understand. They say it's divisive. Maybe so. I don't believe that. I don't think you believe that. I think you guys have hearts that that believe that this needs to stop, and if it needs to stop, it needs to start somewhere. I think we, as a sister city, friendship city with Ramallah, Palestine, we should have a little better understanding of the people that are over there. Respect to that, please put it on the agenda, please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. John Mafara, and then followed by online speaker afterwards.
Council members, I stand before you to request that a ceasefire resolution be put on the agenda. Myself and members of the community request that you take the time for this request and to join vast members of the United States around the world and students of our campuses. There are peaceful demonstrations. This is a humanitarian ceasefire to provide safe and swift distribution of aid of all kinds to enter the entire occupied area of Gaza. It's badly needed as people are being horrifically shuffled around, bombed, and killed. Your efforts and eventual approval of a ceasefire will be acknowledged with all the other city resolutions that have passed nearby and around the country, and combined with all protest efforts to inspire change together, but not as one. Your efforts will be acknowledged along with all others to inspire change and to move forward with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mafara. City clerk, would you please call the online speaker?
Hello? Sorry. Online speaker is Jean Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Feng and council members. My name is Jean Wong, a 26-year Millbrae resident. I would like to thank Mike Sung for his report presented at the last council meeting on the potential estimated transit occupancy tax impact to the Millbrae to Millbrae's general fund as a result of the county's pending purchase of the La Quinta Inn. It was beneficial to clarify that the actual potential TOT loss is $597,000, not the $772,000 amount that has been tossed around by recall advocates. Mr. Sung's report also estimated that the city would incur an additional annual operating expense of $172,173, but did not provide any details as to how this number was calculated, especially since the amount was estimated to the exact dollar. I hope Mr. Sung will share the details of his analysis. Council's 15-minute discussion that ensued after Mr. Sung provided his report was very disappointing and show lack of creative leadership. During this time, council members embarrassingly lamented the same old talking points about how Millbrae is being screwed by the county. Instead of this type of nonproductive discussion, council should have taken the opportunity to ask staff for a short and long-term forecast of revenue opportunities and risks so that the city has all the information it needs to proactively plan for the future, future as well as the present. The La Quinta TOT may be permanently lost, but on the other hand, given the number of new developments coming online over the next three to 10 years, there may be significant opportunities for increased revenue from higher property tax assessments and sales revenue from retail establishments to offset these losses. But without good ongoing financial forecasts and information, Millbrae cannot plan properly. Council members Goodman and Cahalan actually suggested having these discussions, but they were rudely dismissed. I recall that Mr. Sung said that estimating future property taxes, tax revenues was not possible because the new development owners may file for a downward assessment. As a finance professional with 20 years' experience in financial planning analysis, working in top 100 Fortune companies, I would like to challenge that assumption. Building short and long-term revenue and operating expense forecast is a critical aspect of financial planning for any city, large and small. Enough information is available to make good forecasts. It's a matter of being proactive and putting it all together to understand the information that is out there. Millbrae residents deserve to know not only what the city's current financial health is, but what to expect in the future. Visionary leaders do not constantly moan about lost opportunities, rather they actively seek new opportunities and forge new paths. La Quinta is yesterday's news. My hope is that council will step up and provide the leadership to move Millbrae forward, not back.
Thank you, Ms. Wong.
The other speaker raised her hand after the call time.
We'll stay within 30 minutes. We'll just do the final speaker and then close the public comment.
Okay. The next speaker is Helen Foo.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you, city council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So during the last city council meeting on May 14th, I learned more misinformation about La Quinta and the recall. And the recall, I would like to use this opportunity to clarify those misconceptions. So misconception one, La Quinta only represents 1% of transient occupancy tax or TOT. This is not true, and the actual percentage is close to 6%. Based on fiscal year 23 to 24, TOT was about $9.5 million, and La Quinta generated about $557,000. As discussed before, we do not have the luxury of different revenue streams like neighboring cities. Because of this, we need to prioritize being fiscally responsible. So misconception two, La Quinta is decreasing in revenue and therefore should be converted. We cannot use this pandemic as normal business operating years. These types of events are once a century. Based on the aggregated TOT by calendar year chart shared during the last meeting, it's clear that the aggregated TOT from fiscal calendar year 22 to calendar year 24, the rate of revenue is steadily increasing. And misconception three, residents in or other hotels would cannibalize the TOT due to customers not using La Quinta. Residents in and La Quinta serve totally different customer bases. After doing a quick search on Expedia, it shows that for the same night stay, residents in charges about $263 per night, whereas La Quinta only charges $139, which is about half of what a residents in's price is. We in the city of Millbrae should ensure equitable access to the city resources, including hotels, for people with different economical backgrounds by providing them different options. But losing La Quinta, we lose that customer class in perpetuity and deny their convenient access to SFO. So misconception four, the La Quinta conversion is only one issue, and why have a recall over this one issue? Well, this recall is about values and decision-making process of the city council members that support ideas like converting La Quinta. On the decision-making process, we have seen lack of transparency and going against the majority of the residents they were supposed to represent. Instead, they they they're siding with outside interests and advocates over working with the community that oppose La Quinta. It is a reflection of those city council members' values, and it's important to have city council members that have aligned values with the residents they are representing for any future decisions, which is ultimately what this recall is about. I would like to close and say it's critical that residents of Millbrae understand the long-lasting impact we will experience if we do not participate in this recall. It is absolutely important to put Millbrae first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. That wraps up public communication for the evening. All right, moving on to consent calendar. Item number five, receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending April 30, 2024. Item six, adoption of a resolution of the Millbrae City Council establishing the appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2023 to 24. Item seven, adoption of a resolution authorizing city manager to vote yes on the fire suppression assessment ballot on behalf of City Millbrae. Item eight, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute an amendment with the county of San Mateo to provide police services in an amount not to exceed $9.7 million, $30,668 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Item nine, consider appointments to the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Art Advisory Committee, and Economic Vitality Advisory Committee. Item 10, adoption of a resolutions adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2024 to 25 to be funded in part by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Item 11, adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contract to Tri Valley Excavating Company for the Taylor Middle School basketball court project in the amount of $277,054, establishing a project contingency of $41,560 for a total budget of $318,614. Appropriating $318,614 from the general fund in advance of the 2024 to 25 fiscal year facility CIP fund adoptions and authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute the contract and all contract change orders up to the total project budget. Item 12, adoption of a resolution awarding a janitorial services contract to MBC Custodial Services Inc. in the amount of $199,457.52, authorizing the city manager or his destiny to execute a subject contract for up to three one-year options at an annual cost of $199,457.52 plus an annual escalator based on the San Francisco Bay Area Consumer Price Index, CPI, and execute contract change order up to the contingency amount of $20,000. Item 13, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to sign professional services agreement with 11 on-call engineering firms in the total not to exceed $4.5 million for a three-year base term with an option to exercise two one-year term options to extend the contracts for a total amount not to exceed $1.5 million per option year. Item 14, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute up to three one-year addenda to the contract with Champions Tennis for the after-school and camp programming for the City of Millbrae Recreation Program, providing payments from enrollment fees in an amount not to exceed $100,000 per year. Item 15, approved by motion for the street closure on 300 blocks of Broadway for Beats and Brews and Vines on Broadway on August 15, September 19, and October 17, 2024. And item 16, approved by motion and request from the Millbrae Cultural Committee for parking lot and street closures and fee waiver for the Lunar New Year Festival on January 25 and 26, 2025. It's a long list. Thank you for the patience. And does anyone want to point the item from the consent calendar? Any discussions, any public comments? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I just have one staff comment on item 13. I just wanted to bring to to the council's attention and the public's attention that a majority of that, if not all of it, will be cost recovery. That's on-call services, and that's based on our developer fee program, so that will be cost recovery.
Excellent. I think that's in the staff report as well. So any any comment from anybody, or else are entertaining motion?
I'm happy to make a motion for all of the consent items if the mayor would congratulate our new committee members at the end.
Absolutely. Happy to.
Motion made.
Okay, we have a motion from council member Ash Schneider.
Second.
Right. We have, okay, we have a second from council member Cahalan, and on the condition, same condition, that congratulating the new members?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pat, sorry, Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, excellent. So with that, we'd like to congratulate some of the member that has now been appointed to the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee with Mr. Ken Smith and Iris Kim as an alternate. We also have the cultural art advisory of Jessica Sisina as a permanent member, as well as Lisa Marotti as an alternate. And economic vitality advisory committee, we have Ming Fangao and Joshua Mendel. Welcome to all those volunteers who make our city great every day, and thank you for your service. Okay, of course. Perfect. Public hearing, we don't have any public hearing tonight. And for existing business, we have item number 17, receive the proposed operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2024 to 25 and adopt a resolution of Millbrae City Council appropriating the operating and capital budget for the same fiscal year, 24 to 25. And that's an action item, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our finance director, Mr. Mike Sung, for the presentation.
Mr. Sung.
Thank you, city manager.
Got a better mic this time.
Trying to make sure I'm close to the mic this time. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members. Today, we're talking about the proposed operating and capital budget. We've come back to come back to the city for the fourth time now. We've had two study sessions and one overview that we've gone through. So we'll go ahead and get started. There you go. So budget highlights, our expenditure budget for all funds for 2425 is $101.4 million, and for the general fund itself is $41.1 million. We have two scenarios for the general fund. Our primary scenario is $41.1 in revenue and a and a second scenario of thirty-nine point three, which the city does not receive revenue from a fire assessment. That's going to take place June eleventh, the next council meeting. Should that occur, there'd be commensurate reductions in expenditures that will take place for that scenario. Just to be clear, we're recommending scenario one, which includes the forty-one point one million, and should the fire assessment not pass, we would come back with those reductions. Our revenue estimates do include the La Quinta, and if the hotel does close, the staff will return with recommendations for reductions and services associated with the revenue loss. Cities currently in the later stages of recovery, and the city does continue with its economic development as well as significant housing growth that is occurring right now. We still have a lot of critical capital projects that continue to move forward. We have a very robust capital program that includes the Hillcrest Sub Basin Pavement Rehabilitation and Sewer Replacement, improvements on Awani Drive, sewer main replacement at various locations, nearshore outfall, and the water main replacement at downtown Broadway and Awani Drive. So general fund revenue, here we have forty-one point one million for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. That includes property tax and assessments as well as sales tax and transient occupancy tax, which is our second largest tax. It's our second largest source of revenue. It used to be about twenty-eight percent of our revenue before the pandemic. It's back to about twenty-four percent this year, twenty-three percent next year. So it's coming back at a decent clip. Just to talk a little bit about property tax and what we're actually seeing in property tax, I do want to remind the council and the public that we don't actually receive that much of the property tax. The one percent ad valorem that you see for a property tax, we only get sixteen cents of that. The county actually gets about twice what we get, which is about twenty-eight cents. See, the rest of the pie, that the city, the school districts get about half of that. They get about fifty cents for that. So what this actually translates to, and here's an example of this, is you have a two-million-dollar home, and you pay a one percent property tax. And of that one percent property tax for the ad valorem piece of the twenty thousand, county would get about fifty-six hundred, city gets about thirty-one hundred. School districts, altogether, the three school districts get about ten thousand. There's a small, little scattering left for the small special districts that are left. And the same is true for our sales tax as well, which is our number three revenue. Sales tax in itself, we get one percent of the nine point three seven five percent sales tax here in Millbury. There's generally two different rates for sales tax in the county. It's about half the cities have nine point eight seven five, the other half have nine point three seven five. We are part of the nine point three seven five grouping. Millbury gets one percent of the nine point three seven five percent. County gets one percent. The transit group gets one point three seven five percent. And then the state gets the lion's share. They get in total six percent. So just to kind of show you what this looks like for the distribution, you can see that total San Mateo Transportation's one point three seven five percent. That includes the District Transportation Authority and the Measure R for Caltrain. County gets one percent, city gets one percent. And then if you add up all those percentages, the state gets six percent over there for the last four of that group. So general fund uses, expenditures for our proposed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. We're also looking at forty-one point one million. You'll see that there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out. One is like fire, for example, it looks like it's an increase of twelve point six percent. I do want to mention that a lot of that is the U A L or unfunded actual liability, and that's for the pension costs from before. And then if you look at the actual C C F D or Central County Fire Department, who are our service providers, they have an increase in there as well. A big portion of that increase is actually based off of the Calpers U A L as well. So a lot of it's pension-related. The other thing I'd like to mention is community development. As you'll see in the adopted twenty-three, twenty-four budgets, about five point two, it's reducing down to about four point two. That kind of ebbs and flows as development moves along. Most of this revenue and expenditure that you see are correlated. As there's more development, there's more revenue. As there's less revenue, there's less expenditures that are associated with that. So our capital budget summary consists of sewer, water, streets, parks, facilities, garage, and storm. Total, it's about thirty point three million. We're looking at about fourteen point nine million for sewer, six point nine for water, three point nine for streets, two point nine for parks, six hundred fifty for facilities, five hundred thousand for garage, and five hundred thousand for storm next year. So F T Es by department. So city admin has six F T Es, community development, eight F T Es, finance, nine F T Es, recreations, seven point seven five F T Es. These are budgeted F T Es that are full-time. There's actually a lot of part-time staff inside recreation as well. That's also based off of demand. It basically correlates to how much activity that we actually have. So for public works, we're looking at sixty-seven F T E for a total citywide F T E of ninety-seven point seven five. This is an increase of four point five from last year when we adopted the budget. It was ninety-three point two five. So in summary, staff is prepared to come back to council to adjust expenditures should the fire assessment not pass. And the city continues to proactively address critical capital needs and plan for the future. Total citywide F T E, as I mentioned in the previous slide, increases by four and a half, and these are all non-general fund positions. They include positions in the water pollution control plant, collections, water and garage, and they're there to increase the capacity to deliver the necessary services to all of our end users, which are our residents and our businesses. So with that, our recommendations to adopt the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five operating capital budget and appropriate funds to the capital improvement program. I'm questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mike Sung. And any questions or comment from this council? Ms. Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Sung, and thank you, staff, for the document. Couple of questions. In last year and/or the year before, we had approved the set aside of funding for a G I S system so that we could do more mapping and more data tracking. Could we get an update of the current program? I think we've been working ahead on some of that, but there might be some gaps. And if there are gaps, do we need to give you some additional funding for that?
So right now, part of that funding went to the SCADA program in our Public Works Department. And SCADA is a software G I S system for our water and sewer. We also are actually have out to bid right now a, an R F P for project management software that we had mentioned. So I think as of right now, we're pretty good. We desperately do need a full-blown G I S system in the city of Millbury, and we'll be coming to the City Council once we free up more funds and have a priority for that.
So do you think when we do September, it sounds funny to do a mid-year budget augment in September, we could bring that back in September? For the public, the reason I'm asking is, of course, I'm going to be fighting for climate resiliency. One of those is the ability to know what our tree cover is. And tree cover relates to how warm our houses get and how hot it might be during heat waves. So it's a real simplification, and we can go and collect tree data. But if we can't map it out, we're just collecting data to sit in a spreadsheet. And that's why I've been pushing for a G I S system, although the reasons you've given are equally as critical or perhaps more so on that. So could I get a commitment that we'd come back in September if we know what's happening to La Quinta by then, or we know what's happening with the V L F, that we might have an opportunity to find those funds? Because that was our goal setting from a few years ago.
Yep, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Couple of other questions. The city of Millbury was created to fight the creation of the airport. With the creation of the airport, it took away our land for commercial development. However, in my research, I have found at least five data sources that the county gets directly from S F O operations. It includes hotel tax, sales tax, a gas tax, which if we got a portion of that, could be set aside for monitors for the fumes that we're getting over our neighborhoods from the airport, from fuel leaks. They get licensing fees, and it turns out they fund one-third of the money to the Office of Emergency Services, the Emergency Services Council. That just came out last week. And when I asked as our representative to emergency services, they didn't quite know how they allotted the S F O money throughout the county. So to me, these are five funds that we should be working with the county. We are the ones that the trucks drive on our roads that we have to pay for. We're the residents getting hit with now sad, the entire city of Millbury is now at nine point three percent of particulate matter pollution, which can impact asthma and other health impacts. And the airport should be held accountable for that, and yet the airport has never been held accountable for that. So we should be looking at those funds to help serve the people of Millbury. So to the speaker who said we should be looking for other funds, there was our five funds that some portion of should be coming directly to Millbury. I think that was my main one. We really do need for the next budget to be looking for what our risk is for disasters. The county has positioned more of its funding for disasters, and yet most of it is going coastside on that. And, you know, we are at risk of floods, tsunamis, et cetera, fires, earthquakes. They're actually spending their attention on earthquakes this year instead of floods. And one shoreline's plan right now is to simply build a wall, which will not assist us with our flood control at all. So we need to start putting together that resiliency package. Maybe that's another mid-year budget augment. So with that, I support the budget, but I look forward to September. Maybe we'll have some answers by then. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Any, Councilmember Papen?
Thank you. We always wish there was more. At a certain point in time, I do think we should try to look at or negotiate the use of our roads. So somehow the airport receives multi-million dollars from Uber and Lyft. So if we even can tap into the number of cars that get in there via our roads, maybe with San Bruno or Burlingame, it might help because just the wear and tear, we've all seen it back up. So I don't know how we would go about it, but it is something we could use assistance on. We all want to, our road indexes, where are we? We're at the bottom somewhere. So if there is a way, shape, or form that we can somehow leverage that in the future, that would be helpful. Until then, thank you for putting all this together. It's nice for all of us and the public to see exactly what their taxpayer dollars are spent on, what different funds are brought in, and our obligations to the residents to keep the city moving forward and just keep every day our roads, our streets, sewer, water, everything like that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider.
Just to answer Councilwoman Papen, last year, the airport made almost fifty million dollars in use fees by Uber and Lyft. Now, they're going to argue that they're going to move the Uber and Lyft parking lot from the end of Millbury Avenue to the San Bruno side, but who knows how long in the future that might be? So I definitely think that's an additional revenue stream that should be coming to us because there was work just recently done on that part of Millbury Avenue. I was out there taking pictures of the state of the asphalt. Can we get an update, Tom, of what was happening out there?
Yeah, I think, real quick, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
So state law prohibits local municipalities from taxing T N Cs, Uber, and Lyft. So I think that, you know, we'll keep this at the forefront. And in the fall, when we discuss our legislative platform for twenty twenty-five, that this is something that we can discuss with our attorney and lobbyist up in Sacramento. And because the only way to do this, to achieve that objective, is to advocate for changes in state legislation.
If I could, I would only add that not just Assemblyman Congressman Mullin, but the San Francisco group of Congress people got thirty-one million dollars to the airport last year so that they could fix their roof and a couple of other things. They've gotten tens of millions every couple of years, and none of it ever comes to help the access or the issues that impact Millbury.
Mr. Mayor, just follow.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and as a follow-up, has the city wrote a letter to the legislative powers that be regarding the V L F? I know C C A G has done so. Did we?
Several, yes. City Managers Association, also Finance Directors, we're all collaborating, working together on that effort.
Great. And so, yeah, I say we do put our lobbyists to the test here because we are a small city. So if we can change the law somehow that would help our residents and this budget, wear and tear on our roads is significant. So why not go for it? Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for further information to the council on the presentation and Mike weigh in here, the forty-one point one million in revenue and the expenditures to balance our budget does not include the V L F, so that is purposely left out. So if the V L F revenue does come in this year, this fiscal year, then I think to Councilmember Snyder's point, we will be bringing that back to the City Council for further allocation and prioritization.
And I just wanted to say one more thing, that without the expectation that the V L F will immediately come in, we have a balanced budget, and that does not come without hard work. And, you know, running this organization lean, mean, and efficient, and also at the same time, offering services every day to our residents. And, you know, we've been growing our T O T back to the pre-pandemic level, which is exciting. Keep working with our business community to continue to shore up our finances when some of the neighboring city, I mean, it was just a couple of days ago that San Carlos, oh, not San Carlos, excuse me, Foster City, you know, just bracing for budget shortfall. Same thing for Hafman Bay, San Bruno, South City, they all have similar structural deficits, and yet we're able to balance our budget in this climate. So kudos to our team led by City Manager as well as Mr. Sung. So good work there. Any other comment, questions from this council before I open up? Go ahead.
All right. And again, this is probably for the next consideration. The mayor and I both serve on a state committee where it has been reported on new laws that could impact our franchise fees. And I don't think that's a huge amount of, but we should be preparing for that. And then the other thing that I saw in the documents for tonight's meeting was the P E G funding. It's so tiny, relatively speaking, but when P E G funding goes away, how will we be funding Millbury Community Television? So again, maybe the next time you bring us an update, bring an update on P E G funding. And then the request that I've gotten a lot from the public and from reading Nextdoor is the current bonds that we have and maybe some bonds we've recently paid off, and how soon, generally, I think we've been paying them off soon, sooner, that's a word, and that we've also refinanced them, and I'm not using the right term. I know, Mr. Sung, you've done great work.
Refund.
Yep, doing that. Let's make sure the public knows how well we've been managing the bond money the next time we come forward with this.
Or, Mr. Mayor, because of Nextdoor, and I will say managing social media, there isn't one thing I've read on Nextdoor that's accurate. I think Mr. Sung is willing or able, and so am I, to give a quick briefing of what we've retired, what we refunded, to make sure that the record is clear on that.
Yes.
At the pleasure of the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. All right. We'll open up for public comment, although I don't have any speaker slip. Elaine, do we have anybody? We have one hands up at this point.
Yes, we do. The speaker's name is Jean Wong. Jean, if you could please accept a mute.
Thank you, Mr. Sung, for your comprehensive report tonight. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I understand that the Bay Area hospitality industry is forecasting that they will continue to lag behind the rest of the country in terms of getting back to pre-pandemic levels in terms of business and T O T. And I'm just wondering how that dire forecast is woven into our forecast, our revenue forecast for the next, for this year and the next couple of years? And my second question is, do we have the information on how the resident inn may be cannibalizing other hotels in the city? The Fairfield Inn is also a Marriott hotel, and I suspect that there are travelers who, given the choice, they would rather spend their money at a, they'd rather stay at a more newer hotel than the Fairfield. And whether or not it really is cannibalizing and stifling business from other from other hotels in the city as well. Because I noticed in your report, Mr. Sung, from last week, that the La Quinta TOT for 2023 was actually less than 2022. And I would have expected to be actually greater because the economy has recovered a bit more in '23 than in '22. So those are my comments. Thank you.
In regards to the forecast for the Bay Area hotels. So Millbrae, generally speaking, I mean, if we're looking at some of the forecasts, even from the Peninsula Group, usually performs better because it's closer to the actual airport, Millbrae, as well as Burlingame and SFO is the grouping that they actually use. If you look at the occupancy rates, it's generally higher than the rest of the county. So it is recovering at a faster clip than the rest of the county. As I mentioned in previous sessions, for the actual airport itself, SFO is rather unique in that it has 20%, 6% of its traffic from international as compared to a regular international airport, which is about 15% to 20%. So it's a higher rate, plus its main source is around the Pacific. So certain groups inside the Pacific, certain countries are a little bit slower to open than others. So that could be one reason on that end. But generally, in this current area of Millbrae, Burlingame's SFO is recovering at a faster clip than the rest of the county in itself. In regards to the Residence Inn, I do not believe that there's data to support that it's actually cannibalizing. There's different price points for the Residence Inn compared to some of the other hotels. They do look like they're trending towards a pretty healthy recovery on that end. In regards to the La Quinta, I believe there were more unique events for the La Quinta in '22 towards the end as opposed to in '23. So that could explain that difference because most of the other hotels, they all increased by quite a bit. So that could just be kind of more of an anomaly than anything else.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation, Director Sung. I don't, I think that's the end of public comments, is that right, Elaine?
That's correct.
Okay. Bring it back to the council. Any further discussions or comments from this council? Does anybody want to make a motion to accept the report and approve this budget?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Cahalan.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Anne Schneider. Any last comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
Existing Business Number 17 passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much for your hard work and good luck to the balanced budget. That's wonderfully done. All right. We have item number 18. It's Bayside Manor Park renovation project update and redesign. I think we have our beloved Director Sam Batista.
Whoa, whoa, I would not go that far. Mr. Batista.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Sam Batista, your Director of Public Works and Engineering. Tonight's item before you is the Bayside Manor Park renovation project update and redesign report. So just to give you a little bit of background or just to give you an outline of the presentation, today we'll be talking about the background. We do have a pet park option. And then we'll be looking at the improvement plans, the original and the pet park improvement plan. Then we'll talk about the schedule and then the recommendation. So just a bit of background. The Bayside Manor Park was located, it's located at the end of Loretta Avenue and has remained unchanged for the past 25 years. The city has conducted an extensive public engagement process, prepared construction documents to renovate this park. The proposed improvements would include a new playground, grassing lawns, new trees, landscaping, a shaded picnic area, benches, irrigation systems, playground fencing, basketball and pickleball courts. And on March 7th of this year, we had 13 bids, 13 bids for the project were received and opened. However, due to irregularities with the bid, City Council rejected all bids on April 23rd. So staff recommended that the project be re-advertised and rebid immediately after its rejection. However, due to the increasing number of pickleball noise complaints, staff believes now would be a good time to revisit the design and replace the pickleball courts with a pet park. City Council has voiced their desire to incorporate pet elements in park renovation projects. The project's landscape architect prepared a conceptual drawing replacing the pickleball courts with a pet park area. On May 7th, 2024, the conceptual pet park design was presented at a special meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Parking Recreation Commission was in support of this option, which has two separate areas for small pets and an area for large, medium pets instead of the pickleball courts. The pet park would be approximately 8,150 square feet and would have a resilient turf, which is pretty consistent with the rest of the park that has been designed. The pet park would also be properly irrigated to help reduce pet odors, and pet play equipment would be installed in smaller pet pocket areas of decomposed granite. Benses would also be installed in both pet areas for owners to rest and observe their pets. Trees would also be installed near the benches to provide shade. A concrete path would be provided from the park entrance to the pet park instead of towards the basketball courts. So here is a slide showing the original improvement plan. As you can see from on the left hand of the screen, those are the pickleball courts. And then next to that would be the renovated basketball courts. Adjacent to that would be the shaded picnic area along with the barbecues. And then on the south side of the park would be the new playground equipment. As you can see from the entrance, there is a curved pathway over to the basketball courts and a large turf area that will be very resilient and easy to maintain. This next slide shows you the pet park option. This, as you can see on the left-hand side, the pickleball courts have been removed, and there is a large pet area on the top and a small pet area on the bottom with the necessary gates in order for your pets to go in and out of these areas. The courts would still be renovated. And as you can see from the bottom, you see the pathway from the entrance of the park all the way on the west side of the park up to the pet area. And essentially, everything else in this option is the same from the original design. Oh, and of course, let me just also show that there are pet play equipment in the corners. As you can see, the light brown areas are the decomposed granite. And then, of course, here's, you can see the benches in red and also the trees that help shade. So this is a tentative project schedule. The schedule has been revised to accommodate this redesign. It will take about six to eight weeks to design this pet park. And we expect it to be out for a public bid around mid-July with bids opening in August. And then we would award the construction contract in September with construction starting in October. So we're looking at about a four-month construction period. And so our recommendation is to approve the redesign of Bayside Manor Park to include the pet park as recommended by the Park and Recreation Commission. With that, I'll take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And exciting to see that these pet element is now being envisioned and embodied into every one of these parks that we move forward with renovating and put together. Because, you know, people do tend to recreate close to where they live. And if they have a house pet, they would certainly take the pets with them as they recreate. So comments and questions from the council? Go ahead. And Councilmember Papen?
Thank you. Is there a water facility here at the dog park?
Yes, there will be. There will be. It's right near the entrance to the--
Entrance there?
Gates, yes. There are, there are probably water fountains and dog bowls or pet bowls.
Okay. Yeah, your play equipment for the canines there? Sometimes they need a little more challenging equipment, let me just say, certain pets. So, I mean, this is, I think this is great. Also, no, it's nice to see the community, we're reacting to the community's needs--
That's right.
--and modifying plans to suit their desires. So I think this is a great idea. But yeah, if you can get a little more exciting on the equipment there and really a fire hydrant, I, you know, that's, I wouldn't call that very challenging for some of these. So, I mean, if we can, because it's, I can tell you now I have challenges with mine. And we're actually using the regular park equipment. So in coordination with little people. So yes, I would just suggest that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Councilmember Cahalan.
Thank you. I appreciate this.
One other thing, too. Trash recip, the reciprocals for--
Trash receptacles?
--sosel, is that, I don't quite see.
We will put those in there.
I'm sure they'll have it.
They'll have, they'll be receptacle. There'll be enough receptacle.
Okay. So I would just suggest that you have them near the exit there so that staff can easily get to them, to empty them and keep it moving there. And I know we do usually put the bags there for them. So that's helpful. But let's, you know, talk to staff as to, because I see what happens in San Mateo. They have a big one. So you want to make that accessible to staff, whether it's trucks or somehow. It doesn't look like we're going to be getting any trucks there. But let's make sure we're accommodating that. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
All right, okay. Miss Cahalan, go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's great to see that we are responding to community concerns and making adjustments when we have the opportunity. We've had a lot of learnings from our other pickleball courts. And I think also, in the original plans and the design, we didn't put the pet park in because it came in as number six. So just to acknowledge for the public of why going this route and the changes, it was the next item on the list that the community asked for in all the public outreach. And I appreciate seeing the input. The original, just for public and councils' knowledge, the original path went across the arc and through the basketball courts to get to the pet area. But Parking Rec Commissioners had the recommendation to keep it further away so they don't have to bring the animals all the way through the park and through all the people. They keep it on the perimeter. So thank you for incorporating that. I think this is great. If I had any concerns, it might be that the public natural turf area is so much smaller, but I think there still will be plenty of room for kids to kick around a soccer ball or to play in the turf area. So thank you so much for all the work on this.
Go ahead. Councilmember Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Exciting. However, Loretta is a tiny little court at that end. And putting the dog park there, what are we going to do about traffic and how it's going to impact the people that live on that one little block of Loretta? We should have a plan for that because it'll be so far the first dog, first official dog park in Millbrae. So we should know about the parking. When I'm looking at this, I'm trying to guess which one is the big dog, dog park and the little dogs. So I'm going to guess it's the little dogs next to the house right there. So it's on the bottom of the slide. Okay. So little dogs can have a pretty piercing bark. And if you want to keep this, and because I'm nothing but all about noise, you might want to consider a row of thick shrubs there to help block some of that noise from going into those residents in that location. And I talked earlier about the airport and about the noise and the, we're now duly designated by the United States of being very high particulate matter pollution. This neighborhood is also, as well as Marina Vista, in fact, our whole east side, has transportation impact, which means a bunch of other pollutants and noise on that. So the fence along the back on the side, which is really beautiful right now, it's that wrought iron, it's a very nice-looking fence, not chain-linked fence like Marina Vista. If we have that fence, could we consider putting in a nature-based wall? So I'm not saying necessarily a shrub, although a shrub would do a better job of absorbing particulate matter. It could be vines along that fence. It is a beautiful fence if we're reusing that fence. You know, it looks, it sets the park apart on that. And if we're going to do this little bit of redesign, if there's going to be a little bit more to make sure that we've got maybe a purple pipe running there. So once we've got the system, we can water everything in the pipe with our own water once we get it built, which is our top priority. And then finally, to Councilwoman Papen, Mayor, former Mayor Ian Bain from Redwood City worked for 12 years to create this most amazing dog park. It's on Middlefield, right at the railroad tracks. It's in this triangular shape, and it has an amazing park horse for puppies. So I didn't have time to go in and pull some photographs off of Google, but I'm sure if you need to speak with Mayor Bain, he's very proud of this. And I happened to be down there one day, and it's just the greatest. It's got a small dog and a large dog park, and it's not big itself. And we could take a lot of lessons from that particular dog park. It's really, really nicely set up for small and larger dogs on that. So happy for this option. I'm concerned about the parking. And the barking dogs are not exactly quiet. So you might have to have a quiet time. I don't know if the dog park, well, the park's probably open sunrise to sunset.
Well, yeah, right.
Be aware that there could be a barking dog problem, but happy. Thank you. But really, a living wall. You know, I've been traveling one-on-one before. I couldn't drive, so a month ago. If you look at the sound walls farther down into Santa Clara County, they have really greened those walls. So at least it looks nicer. It'll absorb some particulate, it'll absorb carbon, and incrementally make us a tiny bit quieter. It's kind of doing resiliency in everything we do.
Councilwoman Cahalan?
A couple items in response. The time I've spent in the neighborhood and at that park, it has a really high volume of dogs already. And I haven't heard much concern from residents about dog barking and noise from the dogs, more so of dog owners not cleaning up after their dogs. So hopefully, with a beautiful new park and lots of stations with bags and garbage cans around, people will feel a greater responsibility to keep the new space nice and clean. In terms of parking, I think that'll unfortunately be an issue for whichever location becomes the first. But luckily, we have the Park Master Plan that we're incorporating the pet parks into and are on that road to expanding, so.
Okay, go ahead.
In my olden days, there actually are some onsite composting digesters, passive, on there that can handle animal waste. They use them up in Peel County in Ontario, Canada. You know, it could have problems, but if our bags are biodegradable, which don't work in our own composting green waste program, could work in that program. It could also end up being a problem, but it's kind of a cool thing. It's all underground. So just something to do to deal with dog waste.
Okay, go ahead.
Am I to assume this is off-leash?
Within the park?
Yes.
In the gated areas, yes.
Okay. Okay, just checking.
All right, any other questions and comments? I, I have one. Um, has there ever been any discussions about security lightings for that park? I mean, it's, you know, backs up against, I think, three or four residential homes around that area, but is, has there been any discussions or, um, discussions in, in terms of whether or not security lighting would be beneficial at all?
Well, typically the, uh, parks are open at, at
Sunrise to sundown?
Sundown, exactly. So we would close the park and, you know, in terms of security, we would be kind of looking at, um, using just the gates as a security feature.
Yeah.
And also just, like, yards, um, lights coming. Just lighting is not part of this.
Got it, okay. I'm just wondering whether or not when you do the community gathering outreach and see if there was even discussed that issue. Ms. Schneider?
This goes along with health. New studies are coming out of dark skies and for people that live in overly lit environments, how dangerous that is to our health. And new studies coming out, if you look at Millbrae and SFO and the Bart Station, they give off so much waste light that we're never really dark. That said, we might want to put a few motion censored lights in that park. Then the raccoons will probably set them off, maybe even a mountain lion. But, I mean, that's the one alternative. We're, we never get dark in Millbrae. They may think so, but according to the health ratings, we don't.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I just wonder if there was a discussions on that. Um, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but anyhow, any other questions, comments? Uh, I think we need to take some public comment on this, although I don't see any hand raised, I don't have any speaker slip. Um, Elaine, do you have anybody?
I do not.
Okay, all right, well, closing public comment, bringing it back to the council. Any final comments? Councilwoman Schneider?
I made some recommendations of things and I think Councilwoman Papin said, you know, in terms of making this also resilient and trying to have some of the environmental problems, can that be made part of the motion? I would like that. I'll make that motion, but I'd rather give it to the councilwoman who's on Park and Rec.
What do you have in mind?
Um, just to include incorporation of purple pipe and additional landscaping to absorb, uh, particulate matter and noise.
Yeah.
We do it now, we do it now or we increase asthma. Particulate matter has a direct correlation to the amount of asthma. That's why we're at risk now, the entire city to PM 2.5 and smaller.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have a solution for that.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and Mr. Batista, we could put that in as, as, um, add alternates. Um, so if the pricing comes in, in our budget, we can add that in or we can at least then
Sure.
When we bring it back to the council, because we'll have to bring
Right.
Winning bid of the council, then we can prioritize, but we do it as a bid alternate, I think that that would cover.
Bid options?
Bid option, correct.
So, um, Mr. Batista? So as far as purple pipe goes, I mean, I see a merit to it obviously, but then I, I don't suppose we have any, um, going into, uh, the ways I'm at a park, we don't have existing purple pipe infrastructure. Um, you know, so it will be domestic water at this time. Um, but it may not be a bad idea to have those pipes in there, um, in case of the future when we get to use it.
From experience from doing these types of projects, purple pipe is, it's a very small price differential.
Yeah.
And so you have it in for future use.
Exactly.
Right, so, um, and it's very
The infrastructure already, in ca-, you know, when the future arrives that we can actually use the recycled water.
It's also dig once.
And then some of the other things that you've mentioned, what other features that you have in mind, something about noise?
How to phrase it with how the city manager says?
Additional, uh, additional
I'm just trying to get to the point where
I, I don't have my
There's a certain, there's a certain features that you want to see done.
Computer, I don't have the resolution in front of me.
Well.
And so I can't read it.
So, so the two were the reclaimed, uh, water line and then the nature-based, um, solution for landscaping along the, uh, along the fence line?
Thank you, perfect.
Uh, okay, all right, that's your motion? Okay.
Does Councilwoman Papin want to expand the dog playground equipment?
Yeah, I'm sending you I'm, I'm sending you something on agility equipment that, from that Redwood City one. I think we can do better. I think our staff could have fun too, coming up with some of these challenges here. If possible, thank you. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Um, any further discussions? Ready for a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kaylin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
Item number 18 passed by a vote of five to zero to include bid alternates, uh, alternatives, excuse me.
Thank you so much. And moving on to new business, item number 19. Eight thirty-three PM, it's not bad. Adoptions of a resolution approving the design and authorizing the city manager to execute a license and maintenance agreement with HSR.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our planning director, Mr. Andrew Mokinson, for the staff presentation.
I was just going to say that the three-letter acronym gets a little sensitive to me. Anyhow.
High Street Residential, I believe.
There you go. Mr. Mokinson?
Um, good evening, uh, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I also want to introduce, uh, before we begin, uh, two representatives here for the project. Uh, Scott Mulholland, uh, the principal of Creo, and Margot Solmont are the vice president of Trammell Crow and also High Street NorCal Development. They're going to be, uh, joining me halfway through this presentation. You're welcome to come up. Um, so this item, uh, this is a resolution to approve the design and authorize the city manager to execute a license and maintenance agreement with HSR Meadow Glen LLC for the construction and maintenance of a public plaza located on Broadway. Next slide, please, since I don't have control over the presentation. Uh, so the, uh, nine-five-nine El Camino project was approved by the Planning Commission on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. This is a mixed-use residential development located, uh, on the corner of Broadway and Meadow Glen in downtown Millbrae. Uh, the project that was approved is a single-story mixed-use building consisting of two hundred and seventy-eight residential units, including twenty-six portable units and seventeen thousand two hundred and ten square feet of retail commercial space with, uh, two levels of interior parking. On that project site, the city owns a very small three thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine square foot parcel, uh, which is currently the location of the loading dock of the existing Office Depot building. The, the developer for the mixed-use project has been working with the city to construct a public plaza on the city-owned parcel. Next slide, please. So the license and maintenance agreement we have tonight is, uh, for the use and upkeep of this public plaza that's part of tonight's decision. The agreement specifies the terms and conditions for the use of the space, including the ability for future tenants to utilize the plaza for outdoor dining. The construction cost of the plaza is funded by the developer through a credit from a portion of their park, uh, impact fees, about three-point-five million dollars, um, which would be one-third of their total amount associated with the nine-five-nine project. Once the plaza is approved and the agreement is executed, the developer will need to obtain encroachment permits from the city and building pla- permits for the plaza's construction. So next slide, please. So we're going to talk a little bit about the plaza. This gives you an idea where the location of the plaza is. Um, it's roughly across, diagonal across the street from the, uh, Living Spaces, uh, business on, uh, Broadway Avenue, right next to the Millbrae Square Shopping Center parking lot, uh, that serves Millbrae Square and also adjacent to the Safeway. So, uh, next slide, please. So I've got the landscape architect and the developer here. They're going to jump in and talk a little bit about the design of the plaza, we're very excited about it. I have a materials board which is located next to Councilmember Papin, uh, on the die up there for council members to peruse, to see samples of the materials. With that, uh, Scott? Jump in?
Everybody? Um, so we have a short presentation showing, um, our proposal for the public plaza. Um, and what you're seeing here is a view looking from the south-east corner, kind of looking, basically looking kind of north towards the public plaza a little bit from above, so you get a good view of what we're proposing. Um, we have a trellis there with columns that are matching the adjacent building with the white stucco. Um, our lighting is tying into what's happening with the building. And we're trying to provide, um, uh, flexible space out there that has areas for seating and dining, lots of different bench seating kind of orientations. You can go out towards the street or inward to cafe dining. And, uh, new trees in tree grates and raised planter along the back of the trellis. And part of that cascading trellis element is to help with wind mitigation. That's why the trellis is spaced kind of the tightness of where it is as it starts to come back on, down the side. So that was the idea behind some of that. And then behind that trellis, you see the planter there as well. I can scroll through some of these images. Um, so here's a view looking directly east along Broadway. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, is it, yeah, south. Um, so you're looking down towards, um, the shopping center parking lot. On the left-hand side, you see the new residence and the retail center. Um, and we have, uh, the shot of the trellis with the wind mitigation coming up the back to help baffle that. The new planter, um, with the benches and where it pops up and raises there, the idea is that you can lean against that, have a coffee, have a conversation. Just trying to bring in some different elements, uh, to help activate the space. Here's another shot from that original one, um, now we're down at the ground level, so you can really get more of a feel for the streetscape a little bit. The, you know, we're bringing in the Broadway Street lighting, you can see there on the corner. Uh, we have a buffer on the right-hand side, um, to the parking lot, and there's a cable guard rail because there's a little bit of a grade change. Um, and so that would be, uh, safety rail, but also there's going to be a lot of planting in through there to help screen that. The night shot. So we have integrated lighting into the paving to really help kind of bring a lot of ambiance and excitement to the, um, space. The idea is that, um, people are going to be able to say like, oh, let's meet at that new plaza over at the corner of, um, Broadway and Meadow Glen are right near there, and that they'll know what that is, and they'll know what those shops are right there. It's really exciting. There we go. This is if you were a bird flying at night, looking down. Um, so you can see some of the patterning of the lighting, kind of accentuating the pattern of the paving, um, which I think is a, you know, it's kind of a diagonal break, kind of a modern twist on a diagonal pattern, a more traditional pattern that you would see. This is just our standard landscape plan which shows above. Um, we do have a grade change of about eighteen inches in the plaza, so as you see on the left-hand side, there is a small set of stairs that goes down. And, um, the bench, the, the raised planter there with the bench around it, that bench extends into the trellis area, and that's to help mitigate that grade change so that it can all slope nice and gradually. Still use those benches to sit down and, uh, have a coffee and engage with friends and neighbors.
So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have about the plaza design and the license and maintenance agreement.
Excellent, thank you for the presentation. Um, questions and comment from, oh, Mr. Vice Mayor, and then followed by Councilwoman Papin?
Yeah, you mentioned, um, a, a future option for tenant to use it for outdoor dining. Uh, what would that look like? Can you go a little bit more detail? As far as cost to, or to the tenant and how is there a benefit to the city considering that they would probably be using it for some type of private use? And it's public land or city land?
Yeah, the license and maintenance agreement allows, uh, the, the project to manage that on behalf of the city with those tenants.
Okay.
So they would be able to use that space if they had, for example, a cafe or a restaurant in there.
So it would cease to, it would, would the design change then to kind of block it in? Where that it would cease to allow for public use if they're using private, um, dining?
Not necessarily. The, the public plaza itself, there is an overhang there, uh, so there is an area underneath that overhang in the archway where they would be able to have seating. Sometimes you do see, um, restaurant tenants, if they have an ABC license, they're required to, they can only sell alcohol within that fenced-in area, so we would work with those restaurant tenants to make sure that it's within the colonade.
Okay, thank you.
Papin?
Nice butt.
Thank you.
Um, so we, yeah, it's very pleasant to look at, um, I like the ground lighting, all of that, but we really want this to be like a meeting place. I would like to see some sort of infrastructure, so maybe at some point in time you have a little coffee cart that people would really want to meet there. Um, I don't see people coming out of their way to use this, but then again, I don't know what's going to be in the commercial aspect of this building. But if you, like, allow for the infrastructure for a small retailer or, or something, um, that would be great. Uh, it would just add more, um, people wanting to come there. I'm not sure, I appreciate the efforts for the wind reduction. I would probably like to see more, uh, because it's just tragic that we are such a windy city. Um, so maybe at a certain point in time, I, you know, let, let's kind of see where we are on that front. Because, yes, we absolutely want people to use this. And then who we, I do see seating there. Um, so who's going to maintain that? Or, or how is this, you know, you have little tables and chairs and stuff and how you're going to secure those or how are they there? Uh, so, yeah, that's kind of it. And, and, you know, I do see a stroller thing, and I'm seeing more and more strollers. You might want to think about, uh, a little stroller parking area. Um, recently we had the library with their reading time, uh, and it's just kind of a cute addition. But it would make it nice for other people there. So, yes, I mean, I think we're absolutely heading in the right direction, but for it to be a meeting place, I think we need to up our game somehow. Uh, and then two, in the future, lastly, um, so what if, would it be possible to have food trucks line up there? We have them now lining up on El Camino. So I don't know how this would orient, uh, but maybe at some point, the parking to the south. Just a, an idea. We, we want to bring people in and we want to make this exciting. Oh, and sorry, one other final thing, for the holidays, what can we do to make this pop? Um, it would really help the downtown businesses if, I don't know, you had something there. Um, so that, again, that's another part of infrastructure. If we, because we've been trying to transform Central Park, so we got some reindeer this last time and some special, uh, decorations that we've invested in. I'd like to see that somewhere here too. So again, we don't have to have it at this moment, but getting the infrastructure in there now for possible, uh, additions in the future, I think is extremely important. Thank you.
So let me just, I'll get, I'll get to you in a moment. Um, just kind of piggyback on that. I still remember when I walked past Santana Row in San Jose, the center paseo towards the back. Um, it's a designer coffee shop or a wine, I think it's a wine shop, wine bar, where folks could sit outside and it's right in the middle of the paseo where there's actually a business there. Um, I, I think it could possibly happen here too, where you imagine a designer coffee spot where you have seating around there that is anywhere between twenty to thirty people, for example. Um, so that could be possible for something like this. It would become the gathering place that you were talking about, Councilmember Papin. Um, and I, I think that would certainly fit the criteria of up the game. Um, so I mean, I, I think there's opportunity there to make that corner, um, because that is the center of our city's business district. So there is, um, there's definitely a potential. So there is, there's definitely a potential for that corner to be extremely popular, where people gather and linger and enjoying a cup of coffee on Saturday morning. It would be excellent. Or even Thursday evening, where we have, or Friday evening, where we have beats and brews and vines. So those are all the possibility that I think would, could become a reality at this corner. Councilwoman?
I think this is very exciting, just to have a beautiful area like this with the greenery and the lighting. I think will definitely have the community attracted to use this very much. And even go to our current retailers and restaurants and coffee shops and grab it close by and just, it's not that far of a walk over to this community area. A couple of questions. And I apologize if I missed it in here. There's a lot of detail in small writing. What do we imagine the capacity to be? Do we have flexibility? Or are we thinking about a certain number of tables and chairs? Or, what's the capacity we're thinking for that area?
Well, it's about 3,700 square feet, not including the area underneath the columns, the colonnades which are outside of this. So, you know, I think, I think you could fit a pretty good number of people, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how many would fit in a space like that. I'm not sure.
And then just to clarify off what Councilmember Goodman was asking, if, if a retailer or restaurant was to use that space, it wouldn't preclude the public from using that space? It would still be, it would be joint use?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think this also brings opportunities when we're having our festivals and, you know, this is a really beautiful space. A lot of times at our festivals, there isn't anywhere to sit when you grab food and things like that. So I think this will be really wonderful for that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Councilwoman.
First of all, so exciting. So happy to see this. And generally, I like it. Now let me get to the needs improvement. When you guys came to us the last time, I know I had talked about a fountain. I talked to the city manager today. And with the wind and the other logistics, I can understand that maybe that will come back for another parking lot that we may turn into a plaza. But this is our first, first plaza, so I'm very excited. Number one to go on with Angie's, Councilwoman McHalen's comment. I historically do an event for the Lions that started with a parade right in this area. So I am hoping that this can become the new place where we can have carnival games and we go back to doing that. However, the grass area, so looking, I'm looking at the, the current slide, which we didn't have in our staff report, the plantings along the side there. When I held those events, I literally had people drive through my hundreds of kids to get to where they wanted to go. Now, I understand, but I can't quite see it that you're putting in some kind of railing in there. I'm wondering if we could beef that up. I'm worried that people will drive through the parking lot or somebody with a mental health issue will drive through the parking lot. So let's make sure we really beef that up. And then I was talking to the city manager about, in Sacramento, what I saw when I was there for Cal Cities, right along their main, I always forget if it's L Street, right along the mall, at their auditorium. They've built these taller walls and they've got plants in them. Again, it's something with a little more protection and then the plants can grow over. Just if that's something that you might consider for the safety. That experience of watching these people get in their cars and push through children opened my eyes to how bratty people can be in that parking lot that's right on your side there. And again, I'd, I'd love to see that. I like the plants that you've chosen. However, I will tell you, if you go by McDonald Road, McDonnell Road at the airport, they have done some really lovely plant groupings that are drought tolerant. And then some of us were just at Council of Cities in Redwood City. Boy, the heck out there. And they've used their developer fees from Google to plant, landscape it. And they use that plant with pretty purple flower or plant coloring. And it just puts that pop of purple. I would like to see a little bit more pop of color in these areas. And then if we can't get a fountain, and I know this costs more, and maybe this is my last seven months on council, maybe that wall along the side could be an opportunity for public art. I'm doing a lot of reading right now on public art and public art bringing people to spaces. And I currently have a city volunteer who's looking at the, all the nine to 11 public art installations at the Gateway Project. And hopefully, we'll be having an art walk in Millbrae as we add more public art as, you know, developers like you come in. Could we get something like there that speaks to our very first plaza or piazza? I went to school in Italy, so piazza. I can just see the restaurants right there. I kind of like the mayor's idea, a wine bar. I would love a place where we women would like to gather. And then also, is there electricity there so that we can have heat lamps? Since we are windy? Will there be electric outlets here? It'll be electrified. So, you know, I just, I think if we had the wall with a little bit more seating, maybe that'll activate that space. If you go and look at the two parklets that the Ambimbo's built in front of Starbucks and in front of Paris Baguette, there is always somebody sitting there. And Councilwoman McHalen, again, for our events, I have friends who owns restaurants across the street and there's nowhere for them to go. So I can see people crossing the street there over the median strip. But, you know, if we can make it just a little bit more active on there. And then the trellis, I can see it's nice and clean right now. I like the trellis down at Safeway, even with the one dead wisteria. But when the wisteria is blooming, it's really pretty. And I'm trying to do as much carbon absorption as we can. So maybe think a little bit longer on the planting. Think about protecting people from that parking lot. And I think those were my main, my main points. You know this corner right here that we're looking at? And it looks kind of like a drop-off. Could we put a tree there? Or is there a reason we don't want a tree there? Just curious, because when I first looked at the first drawing, it looks very hot. When we have no wind, we can have the heat waves. And until those trees grow, it looks very warm there. So kind of counterbalance it on that. Otherwise, as I said, I have a sledgehammer. I am ready to help you knock that building down. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? If I may to Councilmember McHalen's question, I, I've calculated, I can look at the developer. Right around 75 to 100 people would be the maximum capacity within that plaza.
Seventy-five to 100?
Yeah. Yeah. Maximum.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ms.
Even if they're little people?
Miss Papin?
Good to hear about the electricity here. So if you have a bunch of tables there, you usually have people with laptops or cellphones. I don't know if it's possible to put in things where you can charge your phone or charge your computer. That's, of course, but, you know, something in the area. Sometimes they have little, so Stanford Mall, I'll say that, there's like a pole where people can charge. Different things there. So that might be a good addition.
Probably build into the table later.
Pardon me?
Probably build into the table later.
Well, that's more complicated. But at the mall there, it's just like a little tower as you're walking through the mall that you could get a quick charge for your phone or whatever. I saw it recently. So again, that's the Stanford Mall. It's just an option. But again, it would make it more useful for people and more likely people would go there and take advantage of that.
Yeah. I just kind of.
Thank you.
Tail off of that. I think if we can make that almost like a, an opportunity for a designer coffee shop, a designer wine bar, it would be very complimentary to the nearby retailer, especially the new building as well. Perhaps Tremel Crowe can speak to that a little bit, if you don't mind. Do you have a tenant in mind at that location? If you, if you don't, you know, the type of business at least?
Right, right. Yeah, we, we don't have tenants in mind a little early. Usually, we would start that leasing process during construction. It's about 17,000 square foot of ground floor retail. So it's, it's quite a bit of space. We envision restaurants, coffee shops. I think everything that you're talking about, about activating the spaces, we're really trying to focus that energy in the retail infrastructure, as we're talking about, that we're building in a new building, high ceiling heights, you know, all the, everything from a utility perspective to support all those types of businesses.
Right. So I would imagine, you know, in this public space, some sort of a retail establishment, almost like a coffee, designer coffee, designer wine bar would complimentary to the retail opportunity that you have in mind as part of your build-out in the future.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a city-owned land, so it would have been, that would be in agreement with the city. I think there's already a lot of space on the ground floor. Our argument would be saying, you know, let's focus on leasing up the space and, and activating. I mean, it's going to be, you know, if that area is leased up, you know, there's a lot of people coming and not trying to overwhelm the space that's there. And trying to be flexible, really, for events and a variety of, of activities.
Well, we want people to gather. We're not going to overwhelm them, but we want people to gather.
I agree. Yeah. And there's, you know, 278, you know, units, you know, part of that building. So there's going to be a lot of people there, for sure.
Yes. Yes. We want people to gather. We want that space to be successful. All right. That's kind of what I have in mind when I look at it, a little different than what's being presented.
This is going to be like the previous one. Now that I see the landscaping, the issue I brought up with the city manager earlier, people walking over flat planting areas, I think if you've got that wall, it's moot. But is there an opportunity to get a public art piece? We didn't ask for it in the developer agreement. I can't remember.
Where do you want the public art to be?
I'm sorry?
Where do you want the public arts to be?
Um, you know, I usually, that's up to, I guess that is up to us. It's our plaza. Maybe that's something that MCAC, the Culture Arts Committee, should be identifying locations for public art?
Maybe a spot there and then a sculpture or something?
You know, the other, except the, the tile work is so attractive. Redwood City has used bike racks very creatively with shadow art. And in fact, that's the other thing. There are going to be bikes here. I know there's bicycles inside the building, but for people coming, you need to have a bike and maybe even our, our bike share location somewhere so it's not so totally obvious on there. I would say, given the way it's laid out along the wall, you could make that fence art in itself. The fence that they're going to build to separate the parking lot from there. Maybe there's something that can be done, a little bit more expensive to take that fence and make it something. You know, the other thing we don't do in Millbrae is name things. So I've heard this called Broadway Plaza or Meadow Glen Plaza. But if it had a name, then the artwork could build on the name. Those are just all the things that tend to come. If not, I sort of leave that up maybe for a future council discussion, unless it comes in the fence.
You know, one of the things I should point out is that the structure has to be made of non-combustible materials for the fire code. So that is a requirement for construction, that we cannot have any combustible materials in the plaza area. And that's because of the fire rating of the building on that face. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, the fence could be metal. I assumed what I'm seeing right here in this corner, it's a metal fence. That's why I brought up metal.
Mayor, may I, so I, I think Councilmember Snutter, are you talking about a fence or like a raised planter there on the south side?
Well, you know, I was, I was being flexible once I saw the planting and that if I understood there was a fence there that would keep, keep people from walking over. At our rec center, brand-new plants, people stepped right on top of the plants until we put up a split rail fence. So I, I want to prevent that. So if that is a fence, see those little gray lines running right there? Maybe I'm interpreting something that isn't there.
I, I do want to clarify that that is part of our property and not the city plaza property. That's part of the site plan.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
But I'm thinking maybe art slash fence. A metal fence, it's art.
Yeah, maybe site plan. Yeah, the site plan's great. Yeah, so the, if you see the project, is there a paseo that's part of our project, of the 959 El Camino project? That fence that you're looking at is, is along that private property?
It just slipped by there. If we've got low plantings right next to a parking lot, it's going to get trampled, period. So doing something to keep the plants, whatever they might be, from being trampled, that could be the fence, that could also be the art piece.
We'll look at that.
Okay. And it could prevent anybody from driving in or at least making a lot of noise to give people, I hate to say it, a chance to run away from a car driving into a, into a piazza. So thank you. Would you like a motion then, Mayor?
Do we have consensus?
Was there anything else? Councilwoman Papin had other items. I love the holiday stuff. Does that have to be in the motion?
I don't know if these things have to be in the motion. I mean, there, there were suggestions to help this become more of a community, a place people would want to be there. So I think all we can do is hope that that becomes a part of all of this. And that, that would be helpful here. Because we do, just thank you for your designs, everything. You've been great to work with. And this will be such a wonderful addition to our city. And, yeah, we, we want you to have the greatest success. So I think all of our ideas are just to try to emphasize that and leverage everything you're already doing. So.
And I just want to be clear also, this public plaza concept that you're seeking approval or, and that's what the action is tonight, does not become an obstacle for their build-out, correct?
Right.
I mean, they will proceed as, yeah. So, yeah, this is a totally separate piece that certainly would benefit from doing it together in terms of timeline, but it's not stopping their development.
They've already received their entitlements, so we're back for the plaza and the license and maintenance.
I'm sorry?
They've received their entitlement from the city, so we're back for the license and maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah, personally, I like to see something more substantial. You know, almost like, you know, opportunity where we can turn this into a cafe or a wine bar and where public can gather and become, even become a business where the city can have certain opportunities in. That's what I would like to see.
But would that compete with the existing businesses?
I think it will complement the businesses.
Maybe it depends on what they, they bring in.
Well, whether it's existing or, or, I mean, this is across the street from, for example, Trader Joe's and Living Spaces.
It's across the street from sushi bar, a bunch of restaurants in the 24-hour fitness building.
Yeah. You know, successful businesses, they all kind of get into a certain area, right? So one feeds off the other. So I don't see that being a competition as much as a complement to each other. So the more that people want to gather, the more successful those businesses will be.
City, actually, that brings me to mind when we had a couple of little events for Ramadan. And one of the ladies there wanted to have a push cart for Turkish coffee. Maybe that's something we can think about, the smaller scale that goes to Gina Talk, not so much a food truck that would block this, but the small.
Yeah, I don't expect this to be huge.
Which would be small business permits.
Again, well, I might clarify, too. So downtown San Francisco has a couple parks. And they found them to be more successful if they had a little element of business, small.
Yeah, exactly.
I forget what they're called there. I know where they are in the city, but yet just so you can build on the infrastructure in the future without extreme cost, I think that would be extremely beneficial to not only the new tenants, but the ones in the area. So that's what I, I was suggesting. If you can somehow sneak that infrastructure in, that'd be great. Thank you.
So right now, the, if we were to make a motion, I'm assuming we've already got affirmation that infrastructure, electrification and everything is already being a part of the plans, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
I don't remember. No, just.
I don't have control of the power.
We've already confirmed that infrastructure for our future and future use, electrification of the, the plaza is already being considered, correct?
It is like, it is electrified, so.
Right. And so any, I, I think the motion, as long as it's, takes into account that you're taking all the information that was provided tonight in consideration.
Absolutely.
And then I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the design and authorization and authorizing the city manager to execute a license and maintenance agreement with HSR Meadow Glen LLC for the construction and maintenance of a public plaza on Broadway adjacent to the 959 El Camino Real, One Meadow Glen Mixed-Use Project.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Conrad.
Just one clarification, at the time that this agreement was written, they didn't have the plans for what's being developed. There's a reference to a map. I'd rather, just so it's clear, the, the agreement will reference the plans that are presented to the council tonight
Okay.
as the, as the improvements.
How would you like me to word that? How would you like me to word it?
Simply that, that the agreement will, will reflect a reference to the plans submitted to the council.
There's a reference to the plans in the agreement, it's Exhibit B. I mean, in the resolution, it is Exhibit B. The plans are attached to the resolution.
I'd like to amend it to add, the agreement will
Reflect that.
Will reflect the map that was presented tonight.
Plans.
The plans that were presented tonight.
But the plans and the maps that is being presented tonight does not
The plans are Exhibit B, there is a map also that are attached.
Part of the
But the plan and the maps that are being presented tonight does not encompass the possibility of having a small business in the future. Is that correct?
The businesses that come in, you know, that's a, really a separate, we appreciate your suggestions, but that's separate from the license and maintenance agreement for the plaza itself, because they're tenants within the building.
So, so would that still be possible in the future?
Say again? The, the businesses?
Yes.
Oh, well, certainly Tremel Crowe and the city will certainly work to get the best we can, absolutely. Our economic development staff will.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that that's not
It's our end, that is definitely in, in our interest, yes.
Okay, all right.
A second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? I think we need to take some public comment, although I don't see any hand raised.
No hands raised and no speaker slip on this item, Mayor.
Sounds good, thank you. We have a motion and a second. And we're ready for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
Item number nineteen, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, Councilwoman Schneider.
I have a dumb question because I talked to the public about this building and I can't wait. Do we have a name for the project? Because I stumble on the name. I hate to call it nine thirty-nine El Camino Real.
We're calling it One Meadow Glen.
Oh, it is going to be called One Meadow Glen?
That's right.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, now it's nine ten and I don't think we've done council comment for a little while. Are we, are we good? Okay. Who wanted to go first on council comments? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'd just like to congratulate all of our graduates, young and old, our high school graduates at Cappuccino and Mills, but also our, our graduates from Skyline College and CSM that live within our communities. I would also like to just honor the voice of our community continually coming to be heard and to be acknowledged. I would like to make sure that the item that we had suspended on the agenda in the past regarding a resolution, a ceasefire resolution, is, is brought back or updated in the future. And other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilmember Cahalan.
Along with congratulating graduates, our youth advisory committee has a few seniors that are graduating, so I'd like to acknowledge them and thank them for their service and congratulate them as they move to the next steps in their journey and put the word out that we have several positions open on the youth advisory committee for the next school year, so hope we can get some wonderful applicants to continue the great work of that committee. And then just also, just reminding of some of the great events here in our community, in our county, around pride events and Juneteenth, and hope that our community truly shows up and has fun in participating in these events. So thank you.
Councilwoman Schneider, please.
Most of my regional commission committees have been in the last two weeks, so this is a, a big list. CCG Bike Pedestrian Committee met just to let staff know that they're getting ready for the next cycle of TDA Article Three. We used to do it every two years and it seems like now we're doing it every year, so be aware of that. CCG is also working on the scoring for the next OBAG III under MTC. So Councilwoman Papin, right now, the problem in that scoring is it again weighs a city that hasn't gotten a grant or has gotten one in ten years, the same weight as a city that's gotten the grant every time in ten years. So we need to keep an eye on that. There also mentioned, the executive director of CCG mentioned that they're thinking of consolidating their committees with the likelihood of combining Bike Pedestrian Committee with Congestion Management Environmental Quality Committee, and they might be combining a couple of other things. Emergency Services met, we approved the budget, which is how I know that they've got, a third of their money comes from SFO, and I think it's all being spent south of us and on the coast side, and some of that should be spent for our neighborhoods that flood every year on that. And the executive director would like to meet with us, so if we can plan a meeting with her to go over what our priorities are. If not, emergency services priorities are this special plan for coast side, basically devil's slide south to the Santa Clara border and, and earthquakes, whereas we have done nothing for fire prevention in this area. Also had our Bay Area water supply. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, I think I've already told our city, but there will be a, a request for the city's component to the Bay Area Water Board, the twenty-four water districts, of nine percent increase. They think that this will slow down next year, but nine percent this year because of the uncertainty, this is going to sound really alien here, the state made a, a decision on the Delta Plan, which could take away fifty percent of the water to senior water right holders. Because we are part of the SFO, the SFPUC system, we are a senior water right holder. So what the state has done could impact our ability to get water, which then, of course, makes it very important for our recycled water program on that with no funding coming through that. And again, for everybody, I've already told the Quigs, but Nicole Sancula has announced that she will be retiring in December and she has been the heart and soul, great staff, but heart and soul for a very long time. She'll still be around a little bit, but I think they're planning on going to see their grandchildren. We hosted our bike rodeo. I haven't, we haven't debriefed yet, I didn't miss a debriefing, but I think we gave out at least a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty helmets. It was a great event, the weather was perfect, we served quite a few, but I overbought on the hot dogs, so a remainder, two hundred and five hot dogs went to Good Samaritan, went to Safe Harbors that night on that. And we had great participation with the sheriff, so thank you to the Sheriff's Department and Chief Allen and all of his crew, Valerie, everyone. Thank you to the Highway Patrol, which brought three tables, four different color helmets and sized helmets to all of these little ones. It was really a, a great day to see them. They all got tested on the course. And then someone brought in a new place that teaches kids how to look around cars. That was a really cool, I've never seen that at a bike rodeo. Anyway, great event, thank you for everybody. I know several council members came, it was a busy Saturday, so really good, but thank you to, I hope I'm not leaving anybody out. Thank you to everybody and our staff for that. And we also, I am hopeful that we can get a meeting soon with the homeless subcommittee so that we can start talking, assuming that we've got the bandwidth in our staff, about something that we've talked about in the past at goal setting but have never quite moved forward on, which is taking one of our seven parking lots and doing an RFP with a, an NGO, a nongovernmental agency, to build a mixed-use housing, and I'm hoping it will be senior housing, but it would come back to the council. So if we can move forward on that with the housing subcommittee, and I believe that is most of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Go ahead, Councilwoman Cahalan.
Thank you, yes, compliments. The bike rodeo was great and that new event or area, teaching children how to look at different things as they're walking through or riding through was really a great addition there. Also, went the Memorial Day events at the National Cemetery there. The remembrance speakers were great, a lot of our residents there, former vets, and also the, was it the Gold Family, the members that lost, family members paying the ultimate price there, sacrifices. So it was a beautiful event and I encourage everybody, I think all the Cub Scouts and all the service groups that helped put the flags down on all the grave sites, it was really nicely done. And the, I was at a press conference this morning at the Broadway grade separation. For those who didn't hear, the state is pulling back seventy million in funding, which really cannot happen because that money was going to be leveraged for additional federal money. Broadway crossing in Burlingame is the most dangerous grade separation in the entire state. So we are hopeful that that press conference today will lead to bringing the money back and not taking it away. So it's really important. And eighty percent of the funding is local funding. So the addition of the state funding and federal is really vital. So Senator Becker was there today, several council members from other cities, the TA were all there. I'm sure you'll see it on the news, it was on the news this morning and tonight, so please, we desperately need that funding. And it really kind of begs the question here, because San Francisco just got billions of dollars for their downtown extension. You can't get from San Jose to San Francisco without dealing with the grade separations. It's just a fool's play here, so we really need to make sure that that goes through. Caltrain has offered to do a briefing on their new electrification, so they will gladly come to our council meeting to brief everyone if we so choose. I, I would suggest we take advantage of that. The AAPI group had an event in our Central Park, which was lovely. I forget, they were calling it a tea party of a kind.
Chai.
Chai tea events. And again, several local electeds came from all over and it was a little confusing for one statewide person, that Central Park in Millbrae and not another city, so we'll have to be more careful when people get invited to things. I did attend the awards nights at Mills and Cappuccino. So again, compliments to all of our graduates and just amazing students here, it was wonderful. Congestion Management had an event, or actually a meeting, we did not reach quorum sadly, but again, Millbrae lost out on some funding. We will be working with staff to reapply. We have that opportunity, which is good, and we'll be a little more specific in our requests and make sure we're not conflicting with, this was for a shuttle service. So we will try again. We do have that opportunity, the door was open for that one. And finally here to, oh, sorry, there was a big briefing on MTC. Two bonds are trying to be presented here for the November ballot, one is a housing bond. It is twenty billion dollars. It is still going through the process here, but it will be a ad valorem tax on property owners. And again, trying to provide affordable housing to the region here. Eighty percent will be returned to source. We will all have to go through the county for that funding. So hopefully, if we have any programs, we are readying them. The voters are kind of on the edge on this one. And I really would try to encourage everyone, particularly the housing advocates, to not be so hard and critical on the cities because we're losing support and people need to come together on this one. There is also a transportation bond that's trying to be proposed to bail out the transportation agencies. Samatello County is not supportive of this bond at this point in time. We've all made objections with specific amendments requested, none of which have been dealt with. So this, these are both Senator Wiener's bills. Again, we continue to work with the author, but they have to benefit Samatello County. So Caltrain, Samtrans, BTA, CCG have all voted, again, opposition unless amended, and we don't see the amendment. So that cleared the Senate and is headed for the Assembly at this point in time. And it's just, we're trying very hard with our fire assessment, please get your ballots in. It's coming up very soon here, but continuing, I think there's a little fatigue from voters here, so we'll see what happens there. I am serving this county on the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, so we are trying our best to get these programs out there. And we do need to advertise more so the housing portal, which has been put together for people to just, I think they've had over forty thousand people reach out. It's local, region-wide, you fill out one application to find affordable housing. So hopefully, more people take advantage of that. And then I would hope, Mr. Mayor, that we close in memory of the mayor of Half Moon Bay's son.
Yes.
And if we could send a letter from all of us.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes, Jimenez. That would be great. Tragic, there was a tragic motorcycle accident, I believe. Thank you.
Thanks for the update. And then just, City Manager, what is the, if you can just remind the public the date at which the fire assessment need to be turned in?
June eleventh, the voting actually closes after the public hearing. So the city council on June eleventh will open the public hearing on the item, close the public hearing. At that closure, the voting stops.
Excellent. So I just want to make sure to remind the public to participate in that fire assessment. As we discussed earlier today, our balanced budget requires this fire assessments to go through and it's incumbent upon all of us to participate in this process. Councilwoman Schneider, you have some final
I was going to do
Closing a memory of someone?
Councilwoman Papin, in memory of, of Joaquin Dominic Jimenez Alvarado, Alvarado, but also Mary Ann Erickson, who was one of the original families up in Meadows. She passed away earlier this month. For all of us who grew up with the Millbrae Otter, she was a big part of the swimming program back then and summertime, we hardly remember. We used to have a Swedish population and going up to Svedal in the mountains. I went to school with her kids. So Julie and Joanne and Gail and everyone, our condolences in the loss of your mom. And also to close in memory of Joshua Daniel Mall III. Most people won't remember this, but we old timers will remember the Sunshine Health Food Shop at the end of Broadway. And when we were kids and we could finally be old enough to walk to Broadway, we would go all the way down there to get Tiger Milk Bars. He passed away, he and his family ran that business for over fifty years here in Millbrae. So memory of all three.
All right, thank you so much. And just final reminder, make sure you're turning in your fire assessment, I did that tonight. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, before German, I'd just like to remind the city council of the special meeting tomorrow evening
Yes.
at four PM here in the council chambers. We will commence with the interviews right at four PM. The first firm is RWG, so four PM tomorrow here in city council chambers.
Right into chamber.
And can we state, you can drop off your ballot for the fire assessment here. No postage necessary, but if you do put it in the mail, you will need a stamp.
Right, the ballot box is right outside of the lobby of the city hall. So with all that, we're adjourned a meeting tonight at nine twenty-five PM. Thanks, everybody.